Before we get started, again, I'd like to excuse the mayor, who's really having a lot of fun today, I think. Anyhow, the January 20th, 2010 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLB cable, Channel 2, and are closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLB programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclb.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLB Channel 2, the award-winning KCLB Channel 2, and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on the Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturdays at 7:00 PM, Sundays at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This is the mayor's really good announcement. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits. Once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. Employees wearing safety vests of our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Councilman Steve Ross, and please remain here for the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this day to give thanks for the wonderful blessings in our lives. We ask, Father, that you bless the people of this city, that your Spirit be with them in these challenging times. Father, we also ask that thy Spirit be with us as we guide and direct this council, for the benefit of the people of this city, that we will make good choices for them. We pray, Father, for those who are less fortunate than we are, that thy Spirit will be with them, comfort them in their time of need, guide and direct us, that we may serve thee and serve the people, as we've been elected to do. Father, we pray for these things in thy Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Steve. This is the ceremony portion of the agenda. For our first item, Councilman Steve Ross will recognize our January Citizen of the Month. Councilman Ross?
I'm coming, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. I think all the great help I've got up here. You know, I'm kind of spoiled in the great Northwest in Ward 6. We've got such wonderful people that don't think twice about serving others, and today is no exception. I have a great opportunity to recognize a couple of individuals in our community that go to extraordinary lengths to do extraordinary things. This month, I have the privilege of recognizing, as Ward 6 Citizens of the Month, Janet Robinson and Roger Dawson. Would you both come down here, please? You don't know what they've done yet. Come on up here, you two. Now, stand one of you over here, and one of you over here, and smile for the pictures. You brought the family down with it. With the family stand up to be recognized, this is support. Thank you very much. Now, let me tell you about these folks. Janet and Roger are both members of the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center and have been huge supporters of the center since it opened in 2007. They have donated supplies, equipment, and hours and hours of their time to the success of the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. They assist fellow senior active adults by providing meals, companionship, and transportation to and from the center, so everybody has an opportunity to come and be there. Roger helps many of the female residents in the community. This is interesting. Now, let's just think about that for a minute. By providing handyman work for those who need it around the house. You're a good guy. Can you come over to my house? Janet volunteers her time at the Springs Preserve and at Centennial Hills Hospital, and I'm fortunate to say she is my poker coach, as I come out and play poker with the active adults out at Centennial Hills. Both Roger and Janet are park ambassadors for Centennial Hills Park, and as park ambassadors, they are the eyes of the neighborhood and help keep our parks safe for everyone. Please help me in recognizing both of them, Roger Dawson and Janet Robinson, as the January Citizens of the Month for their dedication to our community and to our active adults and families in the Northwest. Now you can applaud for them. I want to point something out for you. This sign, right over here, will be placed on Fourth Street, right outside of City Hall, for the rest of this month, recognizing your great efforts in the community. Is that okay with you? Roger, you want to say a few words?
Well, this is overwhelming.
You're overwhelming. It's the great people like you that make this a great city to live in.
It's a great, it is a great city.
Thank you. Janet, you want to say something?
Well, I've only been here for two years, and I have to say that the leisure services or senior centers or active adult centers are such a blessing to all of us.
They certainly are. Thank you very much. One more time, give them a round of applause.
Thanks, sir. Our next item is recognition of the Senior of the Quarter. I would like to invite Lance Moran, Chairman of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, to join us at the podium to make the presentation. Lance?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, good morning. Few months ago, I had the privilege of presenting the Senior of the Quarter. And in the audience that day was a non-recipient of the award, and I asked this person to stand up after giving them a little bit of what they do for the community. I want to say that it was very timely, because this person was not alive at the next city council meeting. So for those of you who are out there who are procrastinating and are not nominating a Senior of the Quarter, a resident of the city of Las Vegas who goes out and does outstanding things, makes great contributions, call our Neighborhood Services office. They'll give you a form. It's short, it's easy to fill out, and it'll give us an opportunity to recognize a great senior. Today, Jeannie Tar, a member of the Heinrich YMCA, she asked for a form, and we have two recipients of the Senior of the Quarter. These two individuals have a caring spirit, and they're contributing to the lives of Las Vegas residents. Walter and Jane Henry, come up to the podium. The nomination for this couple was submitted by Jeannie Tar. As I said, Walter volunteers as an instructor at the YMCA five days a week. Without these volunteers, we wouldn't have these programs. Jeannie, like many other YMCA members, is a healthier person because of the water fitness program Walter teaches every morning. She tells us Walter rarely takes vacations or time off unless there's someone else who can instruct the class while he is gone. Jeannie raves about the class, Walter's kindness, and the care he gives to all who come his You could expect that of a wife to say that of a husband, but the other way also works. Jane, his wife, is receiving this recognition for being a volunteer at Shade Tree. For the past 16 years, Jane has worked three to five days a week helping this nonprofit organization that houses homeless mothers and daughters. Part of Jane's responsibility has been to sort food and clothing donations. Ultimately, work performed by the volunteers helps offset operating costs for the YMCA and the Shade Tree organization. This morning, I'm sitting and talking to this lovely couple, and I find out that they went to Louisiana and Mississippi not once, but three times during the recovery from Katrina. That's amazing, unbelievable. We thank Walter and Jane for their compassionate hearts and recognize them as Seniors of the Quarter. Congratulations.
Only Jane went down to the Gulf Coast. I stayed here and took care of other matters, but she went down three times, and we are very honored and privileged to have received this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you very much. For our next item, we are going to recognize the January Employee of the Month. I would like to ask Larry Hogness, Director of the Field Operations Department, to join us at the podium. I am proud to announce that January Employee of the Month is Rebecca Rury. Rebecca, can you please join us also? Rebecca is a Management Analyst II with the Facilities Management Division. Rebecca has been with the city since December of 1989. She helps to ensure that the city has land to build all the wonderful parks and amenities that add to our quality of life in Las Vegas. Rebecca works for the City of the Bureau of Land Management to help speed the process of the city obtaining public land for parks, fire station, police substations, detention basins, and right-of-way grants. In the past, it would take up to two years for the BLM to process leases for these types of facilities, but with Rebecca working onsite, that time has been cut down to about eight months. This time, savings allows the city to construct parks and buildings for residents faster and in a more efficient manner. Rebecca's knowledge of the BLM and its policies are extremely valuable to the city and has helped to improve the relationship between the city and this federal agency. Her strong work ethic is something that all city employees should strive to emulate. On behalf of the entire city council, we would like to congratulate Rebecca on being named the January 2010 Employee of the Month. Along with this plaque, Rebecca has received a $100 Visa gift card. The mayor didn't get that, did he? Oh, good. Compliments on the Bad of Federal Credit Union. Before we hear from Rebecca, I would like to ask Larry to say a few words. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. We're just very happy to have one of our employees receive this. Rebecca is just not only a good technical person, but just an outstanding individual. She's just a great representation of not only the great employees within our department, within the whole city. So congratulations, Rebecca. Well deserved.
Thank you, Larry. I couldn't have said it better than this.
Thank you very much. I'm really pleased and honored to be here today. I've worked for the city for 20 years. I've worked in several different departments, and I feel lucky to have done that, but I also feel very lucky and blessed to have landed in Field Operations. The management there and the fellow employees are spectacular. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them, and I really appreciate all their hard work and effort as well. Thank you. Stand up, please.
See how they are, Larry? For our final item, I'd like to invite Metro Police Downtown Area Command Captain Valerie Jewick to join us at the podium to make a special presentation, Captain and her staff.
Good morning, and thanks for giving me the time to give some recognition to those sometimes we don't necessarily take the time to recognize. As a Bureau Commander for Downtown Area Command, we've really focused on trying to decrease crime and thinking outside that box, and I've had the opportunity to work closely with Gary Reese and Susie Martinez, if you could be kind enough to come down, that I would like to recognize all the hard work. We all know sometimes downtown can be very challenging, and one of the things we've tried to focus on is decreasing that crime and thinking outside the box. And one way that we've done that is taken on the campaign of the Lock, Take, and Hide Program. We all know in our community we're struggling, and we were trying to locate some funds to basically print up these little flyers that we can put on people's cars to remind them to lock their cars, take their keys, and hide their belongings, because we know property crimes and auto burglaries are a little bit of a challenge for us. We're struggling with that, trying to find the funding. Gary Reese so graciously stepped in and personally assisted us in obtaining the funds to print these. And that's some dedication from some folks that usually give recognition to others that sometimes we so much don't say thank you back to those that help us so much. So on that, I have two plaques I'd like to present to both these folks. For Gary, on behalf of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, we present you with the letter of appreciation for your efforts and support regarding the Lock, Take, and Hide Program. With your assistance, we were able to update this nationally recognized improvement program that is designed to raise awareness of not only the police, but security officers and the citizens regarding criminal activity. We recognize that it is only with dedication and teamwork between the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and the City of Las Vegas leaders like yourself that a true partnership with the community can make a difference. Even though these projects may be considered small, they do prevent crime in the Downtown Area Command and throughout our valley. We would like to express our deep appreciation for the assistance you provided, the Downtown Area Command in obtaining funding for the printing of these crime prevention flyers. Your commitment to the citizens, tourists, and business owners of Downtown Area Command in the city of Las Vegas will make our community a safer place. Thank you, sir. And then, secondly, for Susie Martinez. We do a lot at downtown, and I'll tell you, if Susie wasn't there helping us work through some of the system and helping us get stuff accomplished, I don't think we would be as successful as we have been in the last year in decreasing crime for DTAC. So on that note, Susie, I have a plaque for you also. For the past year, and actually, it's probably been more than 18 months, City Council Liaison Susie Martinez has selfishly worked alongside with the management staff and the police officers of the Downtown Area Command. She has given not only her time, energy, and enthusiasm, but was instrumental in the success of the following programs: the Mayfair Community Legal District, 21st and Sunrise trespass program, the Rexford Initiative, Transformation Day, Chronic Nusix Program, Heart Hispanic Community, and Weekly Management Meeting. And that's only naming a very small amount. Without Susie's input, participation, and collaboration, Downtown Area Command would not be as successful as it has become. It is this type of dedication to the community and sense of civil pride that is the cornerstone of community policing. Without people like her, who are willing to come forward for the good of society and to assist their fellow man, we would not be able to make the differences in our community. You are hereby commended for your actions and your willingness to get involved. Thank you for your dedication, your duty, and willingness to serve your community. The men and women of Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department commend you and are proud to work alongside someone of your dedication and sense of commitment. Thank you.
Here, Susie.
Thank you.
Nice cap. Thank you, guys. Susie? Item number nine is a business item. Any item from the morning session at the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance in a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Councilman Wolfson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's my understanding the following items are being requested to be obeyed and/or stricken. Item number 17, approval of a property conveyance and construction agreement between the city of Las Vegas and the Sun City Summerlin Community Association for the construction of a fire station located at Del Webb Boulevard and Sundial. A request has been made to obey this to our February 3, 2010, meeting. Item 18, approval of a maintenance agreement between the city of Las Vegas and the Sun City Summerlin Community Association for property located at Del Webb Boulevard, Sundial Drive, and Cheyenne Road. A request has been made to obey this item to the February 3, 2010, meeting. Item number 34, approval of an inter-local funding agreement between the city of Las Vegas and Clark County as the lead member of the Southern Nevada Neighborhood Stabilization Program II Consortium for the purpose of obtaining and administering the NSP II funds allocated for the city of Las Vegas. It's my understanding there's a request by staff to strike that item number 34. Item number 44, discussion and possible action regarding a new beer wine cooler off-sale license subject to the provisions of the Planning Code and Health Department Regulations, Crazy Eli Western Village LLC, DBA Coyote, 316 Fremont Street, Haim Gabai. There has been a request to obey that matter to the February 3, 2010, meeting. And finally, item number 47, which is discussion and possible action regarding a resolution authorizing the Support of Dot Vegas Inc.'s application to the Internet Corporation for assigned names and numbers and the revenue share agreement by and between the city of Las Vegas and Dot Vegas Inc., a Nevada corporation, for creation of the Dot Vegas top-level domain. It's my understanding, Mayor Pro Tem, that Mayor Goodman would like to be present and to be able to vote on that matter.
Absolutely.
Mayor Goodman, I believe, is in Washington, DC. So a request has been made to obey this to our February 3, 2010, meeting.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items, councilmembers? Seeing none, let's take a motion on those items and bring them forward, please. Any question on the motion? Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item number 10 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of December 16, 2009. Councilman?
I'll make that motion for approval.
Got a motion for approval. Cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Items 11 through 43, with the exception of items 17, 18, and 34 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward at this time? Hearing none. Councilman Wolfson, can we have a motion for items 11 through 43, with exceptions of 17, 18, and 34?
My motion is for approval.
You refer to the motion. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item 44 is held in abeyance. Item 45 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a temporary hypotherapy license doing business as Roger A. Wolf, 800 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 170. This is in Ward 1. Councilman Tarkanian, is the applicant present?
He is not.
Well, we have you here.
Yeah. Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services, Mayor and Council. The applicant was told he didn't need to appear today, but we were still going to hear the item. This item, the applicant was approved for a temporary license back in August with a one-year, I'm sorry, a six-month review, and since that time, we've had no complaints against this applicant, and we don't have any areas of concern. His background has been returned with no areas of concern, and it would be my recommendation that we move forward with approval of a permanent license for Mr. Wolf.
Are there any questions, Ms. Myers? Councilman Tarkanian, please.
Move to approve a staff's recommendation.
We got a motion for approval of this item. Any questions? Hearing none. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item 46 is discussion and possible action regarding a change of business, the name, change of location, and change of ownership for a hypotherapy license doing business as Roger A. Wolf, 800 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 170, to Roger A. Wolf doing business at Sunrise Hypnosis, 800 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 171. This is also in Ward 1. Councilman Tarkanian is Ward. Ms. Myers, please.
Basically, Mr. Wolf and Ms. Laktan are forming a partnership, and they're both individually licensed, and it was their intent, they're moving right next door to the previous location, and they felt forming this partnership, they would be able to see more customers. She's available during the day, and he sees customers at night.
Any questions, Ms. Myers?
Our recommendation would be approval of this permanent license.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. I just understand we have a Mayor Henderson showed up. Mr. Gibson, welcome to City Council. Thank you very much for being here. Item 47 is R2, 2010, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution authorizing. That's been held in abeyance. Thank you, Lois. Item 48 is boards and commissions, animal advisory committee, Kimberly Reed, term expiration 27, 2010. Procedure for this board requires appointment by the city council. Options are reappoint Mrs. Reed or appoint a new member to fill this seat. Councilman Tarkanian, please.
Move to reappoint.
We got a motion to reappoint Kimberly. Any questions? Hearing none. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item 49 is recommended committee bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill number 2010-2. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have this bill read?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2022, an order relating to sewer service charges, eliminating the annual sewer service rate increase otherwise effective in 2010, providing for the establishment of a senior citizen sewer charge rebate program in lieu of the current hardship determination pertaining to sewer charge increases of related matters.
Are there any questions, Mr. Gerbit?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that my understanding is this is something that Mark Vincent, through our finance department, found that they had the funds, that they were able to not necessarily have an increase and to use it at this time where there are economic hardships for many to keep it low for those people who are involved with the sewer charges. I just wanted to say it was, I think, forward-looking to be able to give a break where we can. We can't give many now, but to give a break where we could.
That's correct.
Mr. Vincent?
Same size, but different person. Department of Public Works. That's correct, Councilwoman. It's actually the sanitary sewer account that's where these funds come from, so it's an account where they're able to absorb this availability to forego the increase for the citizens of Las Vegas.
Well, it shows that if there is a time where we have an account that is being able to meet its obligations, we don't have, we are working hard not to make charges, but to eliminate them when possible. And I just think you deserve some accolades for that.
Thank you, Laura. Councilman Barlow, we need a motion, please.
Yes, move for approval.
Bill number two thousand and ten dash two. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have this bill read?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, councilman. Bill number twenty-nine dash two, in order to really to sue service charges, eliminating the annual sewer service rate increase otherwise effective in two thousand and ten, providing for the establishment of a senior citizen sewer charge rebate program in lieu of the current hardship determination pertaining to sewer charge increases of provided related matters.
Are there any questions, Mr. Jurkic?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that my understanding is this is something that Mark Vincent, through our finance department, found that they had the funds that they were able to not necessarily have an increase and to use it at this time where there are economic hardships for many to keep it low for those people who are involved with the sewer charges. I just wanted to say it was, I think, forward-looking to be able to give a break where we can. We can't give many now, but to give a break where we could.
That's correct.
Mr. Vincent?
I'm sorry, no. Same size, but different person. Polk, Department of Public Works, that's correct, councilwoman. It's actually the sanitary sewer account that's where these funds come from. So it's an account where they're able to absorb this availability to forego the increase for the citizens of Las Vegas.
Well, it shows that if there is a time where we have an account that is being able to meet its obligations, we don't have, we are working hard not to make charges, but to eliminate them when possible. And I just think you deserve some accolades for that.
Thank you, Laura. Hey. Councilman Barlow, we need a motion, please?
Yes, move for approval.
You refer to motion. Any question? Hearing none. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item fifty, bill number twenty thousand, or two, two thousand and ten dash one, is eligible for adoption at a later meeting. New bills. Item fifty-one through fifty-six, bills two thousand and ten dash three through two thousand and ten dash eight will be heard at the recommended committee meeting on Tuesday, February second, two thousand and ten. Can we please have these bills read?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Bill number twenty-ten dash three, in order to adopt an updated population element of Las Vegas twenty twenty master plan and provide related matters. Bill number twenty-ten dash four, in order to revise the composition of the historic preservation commission and provide related matters. Bill twenty-ten dash five, in order to clarify the onsite parking requirements applicable to property within the downtown entertainment overlay district, we designate the downtown overlay district as the downtown centennial plan overlay district and provide related matters. Bill number twenty-ten dash six, in order to amend the city's onsite parking standards to provide minimum dimensions for parallel parking and provide related matters. Bill number twenty-ten dash seven, in order to exclude the sale of mopeds from the zoning regulations governing the sale of motorized vehicles and provide related matters. And finally, bill number twenty-ten dash eight, in order to update the zoning provisions providing, pertaining to childcare facilities and make them consistent with each other and with applicable licensing provisions and provide related matters.
Yes. Councilman Barlow, Councilman Anthony, you guys are going to be eligible or able to hear these items, please?
Question, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
When is the meeting?
February second at nine a.m.
Okay. I won't be in town on February second. So, Mayor Pro Tem, I will not be available on February second.
Do we have a volunteer?
I can check my schedule and get back to you. February second at nine a.m. I could let you know in the next thirty minutes.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
If not, I'm sure Councilwoman Tarkanian.
And if he can, then, and I schedule is clear.
Then I would.
That'd be good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Our next item is to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. We have a motion to go into closed session, please.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Pro Tem.
Cast your vote, please. Please post.
February second, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay. Following the closed-door session, the council meeting will be in recess until one o'clock. First of all, I would like to excuse our happy mayor this afternoon. He's back in Washington, DC, to the National Mayor's Conference. Item fifty-eight is any items from the afternoon session at the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
It's my understanding the following items are being requested to be obeyed and/or stricken. Item number sixty-one, a hearing to consider the appeal regarding the nuisance notice and order to comply located at four oh nine Santa Fe Street. There is a request to obey that item to our February third meeting. Item number eighty-seven, a special use permit applicant, Merrick Carmen Soria, owner Bonanza Sunrise LLC, request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a one hundred ninety-five-foot distance separation from a school where four hundred feet is required at four thousand eight hundred East Bonanza Road, Suite number nine. There is a request to obey that item to April twenty-first of this year. Item number ninety-one, which is an extension of time, special use permit, non-public hearing applicant J. I. T. Nirmal Mann, owner Receivership Estate of Amapola Orange LLC, request for an extension of time of a previously approved special use permit for a proposed supper club with a waiver to allow one hundred fifty-two feet separation from a childcare facility where four hundred feet is required at two thousand South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite one oh eight through one ten. There is a request to obey that to our April twenty-first, two thousand and ten meeting. Number eighty-nine, and ninety, a required review public hearing applicant Douglas R. Wingo, owner Cheetac Development Inc., request for a required review of a previously approved special use permit that allowed a twelve hundred square-foot expansion of an existing massage establishment with a waiver of the minimum one thousand foot separation requirement from three existing massage establishments located at twenty-two twelve Paradise Road. There is a request to obey that item to our February seventeenth, two thousand and ten meeting. And finally, item number ninety, which is a review of condition applicant Douglas R. Wingo, owner Cheetac Development Inc., request for a review of condition number five to allow twenty-four-hour operations for a massage establishment located at twenty-two twelve and twenty-two fourteen Paradise Road. There is a request to obey that item again to our February seventeenth, two thousand and ten meeting. So I would make a motion to accomplish those things.
Thank you, sir. On item eighty-nine and ninety, it's required, it's been requested of me by staff as well as myself to hold those two items in abeyance for until our February seventeenth meeting. Are there any other items we need to bring forward at this time? Hearing none. We have a motion to follow staff recommendations on these items. Any question on the motion? Hearing none. Cast your vote, please. Post. Motion carries. It's been requested of us to hold items fifty-nine through sixty-eight until such time that we can get the videos for our video camera. So we'll go to item number sixty-nine.
Mayor Pro Tem, a gentleman has a question.
Yes, sir, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, he needs to come to the mic.
Come to the microphone, please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Douglas Wingo, and I live at seventy-five fourteen Longhorn Lodge Avenue here in Las Vegas. And I'm just wondering what this...
It's been requested of us by staff as well as myself to hold this in abeyance for thirty days so we can get, if you want, we can go forward with it today if you want me to make a motion for denial. There is a request to obey that item to April 21st of this year. Item number 91, which is an extension of time, special use permit, non-public hearing, applicant J.I.T. and Nermal Mann, owner Receiver Ship Estate of Amapola Orange LLC, request for an extension of time of a previously approved special use permit for a proposed supper club with a waiver to allow 152 feet separation from a child care facility where 400 feet is required at 2,000 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 108 through 110. There is a request to obey that to our April 21st, 2010, meeting. Number 89 and 90, a required review public hearing applicant, Douglas R. Wingo, owner Cheetac Development, Inc., request for a required review of a previously approved special use permit that allowed a 1,200-square-foot expansion of an existing massage establishment with a waiver of the minimum 1,000-foot separation requirement from three existing massage establishments located at 2212 Paradise Road. There is a request to obey that item to our February 17th, 2010, meeting. And finally, item number 90, which is a review of condition applicant, Douglas R. Wingo, owner Cheetac Development, Inc., request for a review of condition number five to allow 24-hour operations for a massage establishment located at 2212 and 2214 Paradise Road. There is a request to obey that item again to our February 17th, 2010, meeting. So I would make a motion to accomplish those things.
Thank you, sir. On item 89 and 90, it's required, it's been requested of me by staff as well as myself to hold those two items in abeyance for until our February 17th meeting. Are there any other items we need to be moving forward at this time? Harry Nun, we have a motion to follow staff recommendations on these items. Any question on the motion? Harry Nun, cast your vote, please. Post. Motion carries. It's been requested of us to hold items 59 through 68 until such time that we can get the videos for our video camera. So we'll go to item number 69.
Mayor Protem, a gentleman has a question.
Yes, sir, please.
Mayor Protem, you need to come to the mic.
Come to the microphone, please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Douglas Wingo, and I live at 7514 Longhorn Lodge Avenue here in Las Vegas, and I'm just wondering what this...
It's been requested of us by staff as well as myself to hold this in abeyance for 30 days so we can get, if you want, we can go forward with it today if you want me to make a motion for denial.
Okay. I would like to get in on whatever this discussion is, because...
Well, we're going to discuss it. I'll be calling you within the next week or so and make an appointment with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did I just understand you to say that items 59 through a certain number...
We're going to be trading there for just a few minutes, ma'am, yes.
But it is going to be heard today.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, items 69 through 75 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. Going to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor Protem, thank you so much. I would make that motion for approval.
Any question on the motion? Harry Nun, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item 76 is discussion possible action regarding the development review process report provided by Kirchhoff and Associates. Mr. Nichols.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, council members. Jim Nichols, Deputy City Manager, and I'm here to talk to you about the city's development review process. We recently conducted a study that was performed to look at how we can improve the efficiency of our development review process. For clarification, the development review process is the system the city uses for private development projects that come into the city from the point where a project is proposed to the point which it's occupied. Everything that goes on in between the review, the inspections, the approval process, all of that fits within the DRP. And the city recently decided to look at this process, to look at opportunities for improving the efficiency. The history that led us to this point is that for the past two decades, excuse me, the city's had high growth and very little time to look at changing how we conduct our process. Projects were coming in so rapidly, we really just didn't have time to do anything other than respond to those projects. Also previously, the various development review departments were assigned to different deputy city managers, which led to a lack of continuity because you had different individuals overseeing different pieces of the process. Recently, earlier this year, our Building and Safety Director, Chris Knight, decided that he wanted to look at how to improve the efficiency of the process within his own Building and Safety Department. When I came on board, Chris and I talked and decided that it would really be better to expand that review and look at the entire system. Because from our perspective, the customer doesn't recognize the efficiency in a single department. They look at the point, they come in the system and the point they leave, and so even fixing something in the middle, if the entire process doesn't work well, then they won't notice necessarily improvement in efficiency. The city contracted with Kirchhoff and Associates earlier this year to provide us an objective look at our system, at our process, and offer us some recommendations. The review process consisted of looking at primarily five different departments. We have Building and Safety, Finance and Business Services, which was the licensing component there, Fire and Rescue, and that was the fire inspections component, Planning and Development, and the land use piece of Public Works. Those are the five primary components that we looked at in this review. Kirchhoff and Associates used a number of different methods to conduct their analysis. That included a systems analysis where they observed how we do what we do and noted ways to improve it and basically looked at the methodologies we used. They also involved staff heavily. There were staff interviews with both groups and individuals and got lots of feedback from the folks in-house who actually do the work to get their perspective on how things could be improved. We also conducted a number of outreach meetings with the development community. There were five different focus groups, and each of them looking at a different piece of the development process. And the city received a lot of very constructive feedback from the customers in the development community. And then finally, Kirchhoff and Associates looked at other jurisdictions and offered best management practices that the city could potentially learn from as to certain things we might want to incorporate into our own system. The assessment basically concluded that our development review process is broken. There were 95 findings that were developed, and with those findings, each included an associated recommendation on how to improve the process. That does not necessarily mean the city will implement each of those recommendations, but we will look at each of them and validate them and determine which ones are best suited for us. The report also noted that we cannot successfully compete for future development projects until the process is fixed. Until we become the destination of choice and until we create an easy, understandable, predictable system for the development community, we will not necessarily be the location that folks want to turn to first for development projects. The report also noted that the downtown cannot develop without code and process changes that will accommodate the redevelopment side of the downtown as opposed to the new development process that we typically would associate with the DRP. Also noted was that our current fee structure does not provide sufficient revenues for operations, so basically our revenues are not covering our costs. And there's a perception in the development community that our entitlement process can sometimes impede development, and that's something that is desired for us to look at. Summary of the findings, the report include, of those 95, 47 findings were under the process and process management category, basically how we do what we do. There were 24 findings under organizational structure, which is how we're arranged in our process, nine findings under technology and business systems, the tools that we use, and then 15 findings under culture and customer service, the attitude we reflect when we conduct our jobs. The core problem identified is that we have a siloed system within our DRP. What that means is the report does not indict any member of our staff or any of our departments. They each work well in and of themselves. It's the continuity between them and how they're all connected together that really is the issue and can really slow things down. And that's one of the big things that we'll be looking at as part of trying to improve the DRP. Our goals would include changing from enforcement mode to a customer enablement mode. What that means is instead of looking for a problem that a developer would fall into and waiting for them to get there and then catching them, our hope is to turn more into a process where we help steer them the right way, help prevent problems before they can occur. We'd also like to make the process more efficient. One of the big messages we heard through our outreach meetings was predictability and efficiency are really primary objectives and desires on the part of the development community. And then we look to effectively compete for future development opportunities. As we become more efficient and our process becomes more streamlined, it'll make it easier and more profitable for developers to consider development opportunities in Las Vegas. Next question is what can the mayor and council do as part of this process? First, we look for you to recognize that there will be fierce competition amongst jurisdictions for future development opportunities. We have to realize that we are a region and that Las Vegas is not the only location for folks to consider development, and so we need to make ourselves the place folks want to come for their development projects. We need to understand that the city of Las Vegas is at a competitive disadvantage right now with some of our other jurisdictions based on the difficulty and challenges within our current DRP. We look for you to telegraph to the rest of the organization your expectation that the development review process be fixed as soon as possible. We'd also look for your support on the code approach shifting from a prescriptive to a performance-based code system where rather than just having something in black and white, we look at opportunities for giving the developers a chance to solve or arrive at a code opportunity through different ways rather than just saying what's written in the code book. So give them the performance they need to achieve and then allow them to figure out how to get there and have us review and approve it within certain acceptable standards. And then we look to have you as well as the staff reevaluate the entitlement process and look for opportunities to gain efficiency in there as well. Our next steps include developing an internal implementation committee that'll review and prioritize those 95 findings. That committee will be comprised of staff within the DRP system itself, and I will be leading that charge, and we'll be going through each and every one of those 95 findings, adding some new ones in that may have been missed by the consultant, figuring out which ones we can implement most quickly and that'll have the biggest impact, and proceeding forward. We'll aggressively implement the study recommendations as determined, as prioritized by that implementation committee. We're going to be looking at changing the culture of the organization and of the DRP from enforcement to a customer service mode, and then we're going to be using time and predictability as the primary performance metrics. We're not going to necessarily eliminate all other performance measures, but predictability and time will be primary on our list. That concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Ross, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate that. Mr. Nichols, do you mind if I bring Mr. Knight up to the microphone as well for these next comments, if I may?
You bet.
Mayor Protem, with your permission. And I must say this, well, Mr. Knight is coming down here as the Director of Building and Safety, that Betsy, by putting him in that position, you've done a great thing for the city. Mr. Knight, I know you've been working on this because it means a lot to you, and you take things personally because it means a lot to you, but I got to tell you something. You've done a fabulous, fabulous job for the city of Las Vegas in that capacity, and you need to be recognized for that. Because I understand this stuff, and a lot of people don't, but I do, you and I do, in how this process works, and together with Mr. Nichols and Betsy's team, you've done a fabulous, fabulous job in that position. You've had some tough issues to deal with, very tough issues. And I must say this while you're standing there, that Betsy, you've heard this council. We, as a city, have to do everything we possibly can for the development community and the business community to want to do business with the city of Las Vegas first. You've listened to us, and you're moving in that direction, and that's what I see by this. My counsel to you, with the Mayor Protem's permission, is run, don't walk. We need to do this yesterday for the benefit of this city. We need to do this to help our economy grow, to help the existing businesses, for crying out loud, in this city exist and remain, keep their doors open along with new developments. So, Mr. Knight, I brought you up here not to say anything, but you can if you'd like to with the Mayor Protem's permission, but I just wanted you to be recognized because I've seen what you've done at the direction of our city manager and her staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Are there any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Barlow.
Future mayor. Thank you. These findings are long overdue. The development community has been crying out for well over a decade that I'm aware of in regards to the broken process and the processes of how, in fact, their applications coming to the system only to be checked off and then sent back out to make revisions when, in fact, they have mentioned that if, in fact, they would have known everything that they needed to do in order for their application to be complete, they could have did it on the first round versus being sent back out to redo it, to be brought back into the city, for the city to send them back out to, oh, we found something else for you to do. And so that rat race of coming back and forth does not make for good service as far as the development process is concerned. One thing that I've heard time and time again is that the employees in the city of Las Vegas are number one from the standpoint of customer service counter. However, when it comes to the development process as far as the applications getting through the system, that's where we fail. And so I'm glad to see that Director Knight is at the head of the department and looking to turn the department around because I believe in order for our community in this city to tout itself as a vibrant community, a community that is user-friendly not only to the business but the residential community as a whole, we have to fix all those things that are broken, and what better time than to make those adjustments now due to the slowdown, unfortunately, the economy has caused, but giving us an opportunity to realign ourselves. You know, I look at it like a vehicle. You know, every now and then, the car, you let go of the steering wheel, and the car veers off to the left or veers off to the right, and at some point, you have to stop and get it taken into the shop in order for that alignment to take place so that you can keep the wheels moving in a forward motion. And so that's how I look at this process. Let's realign it. Let's get it right. Let's do it right the first time so that as the economy turns around, and which it will, we'll have an opportunity to not only be number one in customer service on the front end, we'll be number one in customer service on the back end as far as the process of getting the applications in and out in an expedient process, which will, in the end, bring additional revenue to the city, and we can be that number one amazing city that we're creating it to be today. So, Chris, thank you. Jim, thank you, and Betsy, thank you for providing the level of support that these gentlemen need in order to make this city an amazing place not only to work but live and do business. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tarkanian.
I just wanted to re-echo what my fellow councilmen have said, and I do want to say what Councilman Ross said. We got that gentleman there into his current position, and Chris has done an absolutely excellent job. Our ward, which needs businesses, almost lost a new restaurant because of things not being able to be worked out or the way they were handled, the process involved, and he helped us out of that. The business stayed, and they were so grateful for the help he gave. Well, what you're doing here is making it so those problems won't occur because you'll be taking care of the process and everything else. And as Ricky said, it's just so wonderful when you read adversity and you don't have a whole lot of things going on, instead of just sitting and moaning over that, you're making improvements so that when it comes back, we're ready for it at high gear. So I'm just echoing what others have said. Thank you.
Thank you. You have comments? Councilwoman, we have a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem, my motion is to accept the report.
Thank you.
Just one other comment.
You bet, sir.
Not to belabor the point, my colleagues did a great job commending you for a job well done. This is the perfect time to do this. I think that if we tried doing this three or four or five years ago, we would have been too busy to accomplish a lot of the things that we're going to be able to accomplish now. So, great job. Thanks to Mr. Kirchhoff for doing his report. So my motion, Mayor Protem, this gentleman may want to be heard before I make my motion.
It's not a public hearing, but...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem, members of council, I wanted to speak. I came at the invitation of Mr. Nichols to offer us...
We need your name and address.
My name is Jim Stroh. I'm the chairman of the American Institute of Architects Code Committee, and we participated in the focus groups. We also offered a white paper which is appended to this study. We want to, first of all, thank you for facilitating this process, and secondly, we want to encourage you to, as quickly as possible, as possible, to implement the recommendations that are feasible. We also want to offer our continuing support to this process during the implementation period and to let you know that we support you and your staff in terms of making the changes needed to keep Las Vegas competitive within this valley.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much, you guys.
Mayor Protem, if I might...
You bet.
Councilman, you embarrassed me by your words of accolades, Councilman Barlow, Councilwoman Tarkanian, but I think that I speak on behalf of the folks that are involved in the development review process. It's not just me. There's the Fire Department, the Planning Department, Public Works Department, and just Building and Safety, and that's what Jim and I talked about. Building and Safety alone can't do this. And I appreciate your accolades, and I learned from working five years with Betsy. So we greatly appreciate it, but our purpose is not to intimidate, not to dominate, not to regulate, but to facilitate. And those are the words you heard from me when you ratified my appointment, and this report holds true to that, and that's where we're headed. So, thank you very much, and I truly appreciate your kind words.
You know, all of us didn't embarrass you, though.
I know you didn't, and I appreciate that.
Item 77 is a renotation, abeyance item, general plan amendment to public hearing applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner, Liverwork LLC, et al., request to amend the master plan of streets and highways and modify map 2A of the transportation and streets and highways element of Las Vegas 2020 master plan to add a secondary collector to connect Bonneville Avenue with Clark Avenue between Casino Center Boulevard and First Street. This is in Ward 3. Plan Commission staff recommend approval. This is the one.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Sherry Edelman, and I'm your city engineer and deputy public works director. I'm here today to request an amendment to the master plan of streets and highways to connect Bonneville Avenue with Clark Avenue between Casino Center and First Street at a proposed width of 92 feet. First of all, I need to state that this hearing is not a hearing to decide whether this city will be asking landowners to sell property affected by this proposed alternative, and that this is absolutely and unequivocally not a hearing at which the city is announcing its intent to condemn anyone's property. If you'll recall, I was here before you a few months ago, and this item was obeyed so that we could be... so that we could meet with Ms. Hamm, who owns the property at the northeast corner of Main and Bonneville. We did investigate various alternatives and meet with the property owner, and we were unable to come to terms with them, so we deleted the portion of master plan of streets and highways out of that area and have redesigned the roadway to the south, so not to impact that property. The master plan, this master plan will further our goals of providing linkage between some of the newer downtown projects such as Symphony Park, RTC's Bonneville Transit Center, the Downtown Las Vegas Outlet Mall, World Market Center, and other city and municipal high rises that are now under construction. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and respectfully request approval of this action. Thank you.
Are there any questions, Ms. Edelman? This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Some years ago, there was talk about Bonneville being made a one-way street. Is that still in the future someplace?
Anything's possible.
Well, I mean, in the 2020 master plan, or, you know, they were discussing it, is that still being discussed?
It's not going to happen today or tomorrow.
Well, I know that, but it's still out there.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I make a motion to follow Plan Commission's staff recommendation with approval of this item with all conditions. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 78 is GPA 36074, general plan amendment, public hearing applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, request to adopt an updated population element. This is all wards. Plan Commission staff recommend approval. Ms. Wheeler?
Thank you, sir. This application comes before the council at this time in order to bring the zoning into compliance with the existing general plan designation on Floydland Park at Tulie Springs. As is the case on several properties throughout the city, the general plan is correct because the city instituted those hearings to make the general plan designation correct, but it was the previous policy not to follow up with the zoning. Therefore, we have many properties, many park properties, and many of you other council persons know that in your wards, there's been parks that have been brought forward to bring that zoning into compliance with the general plan to ensure that the park has the proper general plan and zoning to provide certainty into the long-term future that that property will remain a park, always a park, and not be able to be developed for any other use. That is what we're bringing forward today, is a request for the rezoning to ensure that this facility remain a park.
Is that item 79 or 78?
I apologize. That was just 79. So if I can just put that on the record, and now I can go back to 78 appropriately.
Please do.
Mr. Councilman Ross had pressed upon me the importance of 79, so I went right to that with enthusiasm. 78, sir, and I apologize, is the population element. This is bringing this element that is required by the State of Nevada into compliance with current state law. The previous element was adopted quite some time ago. We are updating it with current information, and it is important to have this element online as we go forward into the 2010 census. The project has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and was part of public workshops, and we request your approval at this time.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ross, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. In the morning session, item number 2051, I'm sorry. I mean, are we talking about two different things? Because on this, it says we're a request to update the population element, and on item 21 this morning, we adopted the updated population element.
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem?
Please do.
This, item 78, is the public hearing which you have before you now. 51 is merely the introduction. It is not the adoption of that ordinance, and that follows this public hearing in essentially your next two meetings from now, you will actually ordinance, if you take the action to approve by the public hearing today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross, we'll let you make the motion, okay?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I would move to follow Plan Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item 78.
You've heard the motion. Cast your vote. Please post. Got a vote, buddy. Thank you. Motion carries. Just for the record, I'll read number 79 into the record. It's a rezoning 36093. It's a public hearing applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates, undeveloped PF Public Facilities, general plan designation, and undeveloped PR OS Parks Recreational Open Space, general plan designation to CB Civic on 697.78 acres, generally located at 9200 Tulie Springs Road. This is in the great Ward Six. Plan Commission staff recommend approval. Margot, do you have anything else you want to add?
I'll add one thing, sir. Thank you. And that this zoning will also ensure that the master plan that was created for this property will be implemented.
That's really good. Thank you. Councilman Ross, any questions or comments?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you very much. And I had the director, thank you for being zealous and heading in that direction, focusing on that agenda item. I needed you to do that, Director, because sometimes the public doesn't understand when they get noticed, with the notice of anything that the City of Las Vegas does. Councilman Wolfson has had this discussion several times on certain items, and it's important because I see that, for the record, we have over 20 protests. And for those folks who protested this item, they just send a little card and stick it in the mail, it's important that they understand what we're doing here. We are protecting one of the most valuable assets the City of Las Vegas has in regards to changing these designations. And to me, Director, I call it a typo. We're just trying to change it to fit into the plan, the way it should be, and to protect this land for generations to come.
Yes, sir.
And I think that was important.
Yes, sir.
So those of you that are watching and home or here in the audience today, it's important that you understand that's why we're doing that. So that's why I had to do that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the staff? I mean, from councilmembers? Hearing none. Councilman Ross?
Here we are. I would move to follow Plan Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of this item.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 80 is a variance 36543, public hearing applicant owner, Stephen Kern, request for a variance to allow a rear yard setback 11 feet where 15 feet is required for an existing 392 square foot addition on 0.16 acres at 413 Meadows Valley Drive. This is in Ward One. Plan Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends denial. Yes, sir. Glad to hear from you.
I'm Stephen Kern, so I'm here to answer any questions that need.
Any questions of Mr. Kern? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian, please.
I move for approval with all conditions.
We got a motion for approval. All those in favor, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 81 and 82. Item 81 is a variance 36577, request for a branch to allow 170 parking spaces where 228 are required. Item 82, a site development review, 36576, request for a major amendment to an improved site development plan review for site modifications for previously approved maximum 350-unit multifamily residential development. The applicant is Nevada Hand, and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. The project is located on 4.86 acres on the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately 850 feet west of Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval, and staff recommends denial of both items. These items are in Ward Five and are public hearings which I now declare open. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Bob Fievelman, Jackie Haas, Nevada Hand, 295 East Warm Springs. We are here to answer any questions, and we agree with Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicants?
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem?
Please.
For your consideration, on item 82, I have spoken with the applicant, and staff would recommend eliminating condition number six on the SDR, as it is covered by another condition.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on these items?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. After I spoke at the Planning Commission, I found out that this is going to be a family thing. Is there a playground in this site development plan review? And the other issue was that they're, did they get the thing with the trees squared away? Because they were asking for, I think, a larger tree but fewer of them or something like that. I wanted to make sure that that was squared around. Maybe they could plant chinaberry so the kids could have ammo for their swing shots.
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem?
Please.
The condition with regard to the trees is condition number five, which was amended at the Planning Commission, requiring that the entire site accommodate the 103 required trees.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on these items?
How about the player?
Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Bartle, please.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Margot. Margot, the conditions that you had mentioned, that's item number 82, correct?
Yes, sir. Delete number six on item 82.
Number five.
No, sir. Six. The condition number five is the one that requires the 103 trees, and so we would request that that remain. Condition number six is no longer necessary because it's covered by number five.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. And on item number 81, as far as the variance is concerned, why is staff recommending denial, Margot?
Merely the code provision, sir, that the lot itself does not preclude the provision of parking.
Okay. And what does the code state as far as the number of parking spaces?
In this case, the code does require the, let me double check to make sure there wasn't a change on the plans.
Right.
It is still the 170 where the 228 is required.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And Jackie, would you explain to us the need for 170 versus going with the code, why you're requesting the variance?
Sure. We feel, and I don't know if this is, if you'll be able to see this, but, so, we developed Horizon Crest Apartments, which is just east of this development right here. That's 78 units, and if you can kind of zero in, there's just not a need for that amount of parking for the income that we're serving there. We feel that 170 is adequate. We have 144 units, so each resident will definitely have a parking space, but we feel that the income there doesn't justify multiple vehicles.
Okay, so 140 units.
144.
144 units. And let's say each unit has one vehicle, and that's approximately a little bit over 30 additional or 26 additional parking spaces. Is that what you're saying? You have more parking spaces than units?
We're, we have 170 parking spaces, and we have 144 units.
Okay, got you. Okay.
So what I said, or what I meant to say was that each resident will have one...
One parking space?
Correct.
Okay. So we have, from 144, so that's, yeah, 26 additional parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, then I don't have a problem with that. Then I'll move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions.
That's on item 81?
That's on item 81, Mayor Pro Tem.
Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. And item 82?
And on item 82, I would move to strike condition number six, being that condition number five covers that requirement. So I will move for approval on this item, subject to all conditions with the retraction of item number, condition number six. That would be my motion.
Thank you. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
I have one additional question, Mayor Pro Tem, through you, please.
You bet.
When do you project this development moving forward as far as beginning to end?
We hope to start getting some time in April of this year.
Okay, so that's more development coming into the area. Okay, great. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
May I? Bob, are you Jackie's boss, or is she your boss? The reason I ask that question, you know, you don't have to answer if you don't want, is that Jackie appeared on my Axess City Council show yesterday, which starts airing this Thursday, if anybody wants to watch it, and apparently it was Jackie's first time she'd ever been on television. And she was so nervous, and she did just a great job. So if you're her boss, she deserves a raise.
I'm not my boss, but thanks.
I got to ask you guys a question real quick. This lady down here wants your name and record, your name and address for the record, please. She gave it to us once, but go ahead and give it to us again. Your name?
Oh, Jackie Haas.
And what's yours, sir?
Bob Fievelman. We're both at 295 East Warm Springs.
Is that okay, city clerk?
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll go to item 83. It is RQR, public hearing applicant Reagan National Advertising, owner Gateway Motel Inc., require review of an approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall, 28-foot by 24-foot off-ramp sign at 928 South Las Vegas Boulevard. This is Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Plan Commission recommends approval. Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon. Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant, and we'd ask that you follow recommendation of approval of the Plan Commission.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wheeler?
Sir.
We have a condition that it would be for three years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to change that to one year, if I could, please.
I would refer that to the city attorney's staff.
We actually have a minimum of three years, Mayor Pro Tem, according to our code.
Would you request a one-year review, please?
Took the words right out of my mouth. I requested one-year review.
It's fine.
We have a site down there where we're going to have some new redevelopment going on, and we're just going to allow them to have the sign at this location until it says time to start construction on the new job.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem. That's fine.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. My motion will be to follow Plan Commission's recommendation for approval of this item with a one-year review. Thank you.
If I may, that would just change condition number one to the agenda closest to January 20th, 2011.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Items 84 and 85. 84 is a special use permit to public hearing applicant owner, Oakbrook Realty and Investments LLC, request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,079-square-foot bail bond service at 321 South Casino Center Boulevard, Suite 105. This is Ward Three. Plan Commission staff recommend approval. Planning commission staff recommend approval. Item eighty-five is a special use permit, 36552 special use permit, public hearing applicant owner, Oakbrook Realty and Investments, LLC requests for a special use permit for proposed 1,624 square foot billboard, square foot bail bond service at 321 South Casino Center Boulevard, Suite 110 and 115. Again, this is an award three. Planning commission staff recommends approval. Yes, sir?
Kevin Plensner, I represent Oakbrook Realty Investments, LLC, at 1,000 Rice Boulevard, Oakbrook Lakes, Illinois. I represent the Oakbrook.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public who wants to speak on these two items? Senator Owen will close the public hearing. On item eighty-four, I make a motion to follow planning commission staff recommendation for approval with all conditions, please. Please cast your vote. Please post.
Items fifty-nine through sixty-eight are ready for you now.
Where's Devon?
He is in here. There he is, right over there, sitting in the audience.
Okay. Motion carries. And item eighty-five, again, I'll follow planning commission staff recommendation for approval of this item with all conditions. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you. With your indulgence, please, I'd like to go back to items fifty-nine through sixty-eight. These are all public hearing items also. I understand we have all the videos here? I believe so. Thank you. Item fifty-nine is a ban side in public hearing to consider report of expenses to recover cost for abatement of nuisance located at 1844 Navajo Lake Way in the amount of $4,690. Assess a maximum of $43,550 in daily civil penalties. Property owner, Bio Suxon. This is an award one. Mr. Smith, please.
I believe on this particular item, Your Honor, this is the one that was abated from the last meeting, so I'm just going to go ahead and read the purpose and background again. Again, my name is Devon Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Gray Eagle Construction to remove all trash and high vegetation from all yards and post no trespassing signs. To date, there have been 10 inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of August 2009 was $125,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include an $800 invoice for Gray Eagle Construction Services in addition to other fees for a total of $4,690, and consider assessing a maximum of $43,550 in daily civil penalties.
Are there any questions? Mr. Smith? You guys, your ladies, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Frances Cox, and I'm with USA Real Estate and Property Management. We were here at the last council meeting, and this was placed on this agenda to be reviewed. I think you were going to review some documents for reconsideration, because what we were asking council members to do was to abate, there's $43,000 in civil charges here. And first of all, we need to go back, that this was, all of this happened, the violation of the property happened prior to Mr. Buxton owning the property. The notice that was actually recorded or filed happened prior to his owning it. The repair happened prior to his owning it. He did not own the property until August 28th of '09. And then a lien was placed against the property in November, which is the first that any of us had heard about. This is the listing office, by the way, and the selling office that sold him the property.
Excuse me a second, ma'am. Devon, you want to address this, please?
I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Still, Mr. Still and myself have gone through all the documents, and the notice and order is on the preliminary title search, that we did have a notice and order recorded against the property. So I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Still respond to that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, members of council, Dan Still from the city attorney's office. The, one of the ladies up there handed Devon a couple inches of documents the last time we were here. We abated, so I would have the opportunity to take a look at those. Included within the documents is purchase and sale agreement, preliminary title report, a bunch of other things. The bottom line is that the notice and order showed up on the preliminary title report, which was recorded months before the closing of this particular property. It was recorded in March of '09. As they're representing, this was closed, the closing took place apparently sometime in August, late August of '09. I talked to Mr. Smith to see if any representative from the title company, the buyer's agent, the seller's agent, anyone at all attempted to contact him regarding the notice and order that had been recorded and was showing up on the preliminary title report. He indicated to me that the Neighborhood Services records demonstrated that no one used any due diligence, and they were not contacted by anyone to find out what the status of this notice and order was. So that's the issue with, as it relates to notice. The contract itself, the purchase and sale agreement, apportions responsibility for code enforcement actions. It specifically calls it out. Obviously, today is not the forum for that to take place, for this body to get into the contractual nuances and try to make an interpretation of that. My recommendation is that this is a private matter between private parties based upon a contractual relationship, purchase and sale agreement, a preliminary, and a final title report, and we need to let them resolve that in another forum, which is not the forum that we're in today. So basically, the council has the authority to impose whatever fines or costs that it deems appropriate in this matter and file and record that as a lien against this property, because notice was received through the preliminary title report.
So what would be your recommendation?
Are you asking me, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would say that we, the city certainly, I reviewed the tape yesterday of the meeting, and I, the mayor mentioned, and I agree, I think the council uniformly typically agrees with this, is that the city spent real money to abate this problem. You know, we incurred costs for inspectors to go out there. We hired a contractor to go out there. And so those are the costs that I think that probably makes sense in this particular case, these additional daily civil penalties. You know, it's within the council's discretion, but in this case, I think, given that there's probably going to be some kind of dispute, whether it turns into litigation or not, I don't know, but certainly the city's entitled to recover those costs that it incurred.
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I understand, but as I understand, the information was there and in the files, so I feel we should go for the hard costs we had to pay, and I move that we go for the $4,690 of hard costs and no civil penalties.
Could I point out one thing, that in that $4,600, if my client received a memorandum a few days ago, and he lives in Canada, that's why he's not here, by the way, in that $4,600, there is $2,450 of civil penalties as well.
How is that, Devon?
When we do the inspections, the council had approved at one point that we would do the inspection fee and integrated civil penalties associated with those inspection fees for real time and real cost.
Ma'am, that amount is the fee we charge for inspection. That was our people who went out there, and that was the cost to us for the inspections. So that's included within the hard costs. That's nothing to do with any civil fee or anything like that, or any penalty. It's just the cost. We just want the city to retrieve the costs it had to pay. And I understand there may be some difficulty, who pays those costs eventually, but that is a private matter, as our attorney stated. So my motion is to recover the costs, which included, excuse me, let me just go through this. The inspection, the reinspection, and any of the fees owed and any of the costs involved. So it's just the hard costs that I.
That's $4,690, right?
$4,690.
Thank you.
And then you don't have to worry about the $43,000 sum, because that's part of civil penalties, and there are no civil penalties I'm recommending.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ross?
May I just make one more comment?
Just hold on, please.
Before we vote on this item, Mr. Still, what I'm afraid of is we're going to see more of these, and I don't know the right approach to this. When mortgage companies and lenders have neglected and ignored the city of Las Vegas' request for abatement, we have been very clear as a council in general, sending a clear message to them that we're not going to stand for it. We want them to take care of these properties. If they're not going to help these struggling homeowners keep their homes, we're going to hold them accountable for taking care of them after they've moved out. Green pools, broken windows, overgrown shrubbery, and that sort of thing. I guess my question to you, Mr. Still, is this. If we were so inclined as a council to keep this $43,000 civil penalties, at the time this was placed on it, whose responsibility was it? Who owned this property when we sent the paperwork out, when we put these civil penalties on it? Who owned it?
The bank did.
Well, it originally started out with a previous owner, then it went to the hands of the bank, and then it changed hands into these folks' possession. So it's changed hands three times since we've started this process.
Since we started this process.
Correct. And I have return cards from the bank, these people, and nothing from the previous owner.
And what I'm understanding from Mr. Still is this. This was on the title report.
Correct.
And I know this will be an issue for them in another venue, not this venue. But if this information is on a title report, somebody had to catch this. A loan officer, a title officer, somebody should have caught this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Still, in the conversations that we've had and the research we've done, it is the seller, the owner of the property, who's currently selling the property, to disclose this to the purchaser.
Yes.
And it is the bank, it was the bank's responsibility, or their agent, to disclose this to the purchaser. It was their responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Still.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am. We need your name and address for the record, please.
I sold the property and the buyer.
We need your name and address, please.
My name is Sima. My address, you mean the office or?
I don't care.
Okay, 6292 West Fremont and Row.
Thank you.
Hopon, Redding, L C. I sold the property, is that if I know the lien is now clear, I will now sell this property to my buyer. I don't want to hurt my buyer, you know? He's innocent. But I didn't know. I don't know that. I didn't see that there's a note on the stick on the door. It's very, very old, no time, nothing.
We understand that, ma'am. We're not here to try to dissolve the problems that we have. All we know is that the city spent $4,690, and we're going to get the money back.
Yeah, I know that. But something's wrong in the system, you know? Nobody can catch that.
I understand that, ma'am. We understand that. We've heard this twice now, okay?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to tell you that we're not, we're trying not to have any punishment to you that we give, which we could do to the civil penalties. As our attorney has stated, it's a private matter. Anything that you would need to do to recover, if you wanted to go to the owner or to whoever to get the $4,690, but the city can't afford to cover that in all the number of cases that are coming up. It's not our fault that either a property manager, or a realtor, or a bank, or whatever, if something is not seen, or something is misused. All we want to recover is the cost, the money we had to put out, taxpayers' money. And so we just need to recover that so we can go back on our general fund for taxpayer use.
Thank you very much. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman. Item sixty is a ban side in public hearing to consider report of expenses to recover cost for abatement of nuisance located at 2712 Firewater Court in the amount of $3,647, and assess a maximum of $50,050 in daily civil penalties. Property owner, Bank New York Mellon, TRS. This is an award two. Mr. Smith, please.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devon Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Regency Design and Landscape to remove all dead vegetation and high weeds from all areas of the property and secure open side gate of rear yard. To date, there have been eight inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of August 2009 was $318,199. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a $500 invoice for Regency Design and Landscape Services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $3,647, and consider assessing a maximum of $50,050 in daily civil penalties.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Smith?
Mayor Protem?
Please.
When we were here two weeks ago, we heard your report, and I asked you to contact the bank to see if we could get any kind of a response, because my concern was that this is a very nice house out in the lakes area, and that it was basically a weed and vegetation issue with a gate that needed to be repaired, and that's why the hard cost, if you will, for the contractor was only $500. But my concern was that the property was basically cured, abated, whatever the word is, last summer, and here we are into the wintertime, if you will, four, or five, six months later. And my concern was, you know, who's going to maintain the property during this period of time? You really didn't know, and I said, well, get in touch with the bank. Because my inclination was to not only make a recommendation to the council for the abatement amount of $575, and the inspection fees totaling $3,000 and change, but also to consider the daily civil penalties of $50,000. And we have somebody new here. So that's where we were last week, and my question would be, Mayor Protem, if you don't mind, hi, who are you?
Hi. I'm Patty Kelly. I'm here representing the bank that has the property right now. We are the listing agents. I'm Patty Kelly, 2777 Paradise Road, Unit 702, in Las Vegas. I'm a realtor with Kelly and Associates. And we have been in contact with your staff, Lisa Hibbler, and I can tell you that we have a check that you'll have on Friday. It's FedEx picked it up last night from the bank's offices in Arizona, and we've had a problem getting the 3647 to you from one office in the bank's department to another. So the check for 3647 was requested two weeks ago, and we asked that you hold off on any other civil penalties until after Friday. They assure us that the check will be to you by Friday. I can tell you that the property is now in escrow. We have a buyer. It's going to close in the month of February, and hopefully that will take care of the situation.
Okay. Two weeks ago, I think we said that we had sent notice to the bank and that you had the return card, but obviously the bank wasn't here. So did you know before two weeks ago about our meeting that was going to take place?
I only came on the scene because the asset manager had received something from the city. So it filtered down, I mean, they're all over the country. They're not in one little location. So I'm working with the asset manager out of Phoenix, Arizona, and she had requested through Bank of America from another department in another state. So we had to go through their different departments. But we finally figured out what was going on, and I know that that's been a problem on many, many properties in Las Vegas, because I was president of the Board of Realtors in 2008, and this is a problem that we have on a daily basis.
And that's why you're sitting with Kip Cooper?
Yep. Yes.
Well, I'm glad, if you will, that we did what we did, because two weeks ago, I was ready to make a motion to impose the 3647 plus the $50,000 daily civil penalty.
They got their notice.
Yeah, we woke somebody up.
Yeah.
The property's in escrow.
Yes.
Do you have a real buyer? You believe this property's going to close?
We have a real buyer. It sold for 212. Property values are down, as you realize, but we have a real buyer with real money, and they're going to close in February.
And are they going to move in?
Yes.
They're going to live in the property?
Yes, they're going to live in the property.
And how is the property today? Is it maintained? I mean, have you been out to the property?
No, I haven't. I'm here only because the broker is teaching a class this afternoon, and they wanted a representative here.
Have we had anybody out to the property in the last 60 days or so?
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Please.
Yes, we have. We've had staff out there this past week, and the property remains in the same condition. We just want to, one of the recommendations that myself and Mr. Still has talked about is since the property is in escrow, that if you go ahead and authorize the lien to be placed in the amount of the 3647, we would like to get that recorded right away, so that when they close on the property, the city does get their money. So what we would do is we would go ahead and place the lien on the property and give the title company a copy of that, so that it would be cured in close of escrow.
I mean, it sounds reasonable, but what does that do to your potential buyer? Does your potential buyer have any idea that they're going to be stuck with $3,600?
Well, all liens have to be paid before the close of escrow. Now, the check's going to be in your office, so therefore, the check's already going to be with you.
You know, I'm going to trust this lady. You just have a trusting face.
Oh, thank you.
And, you know, if we're talking about $36 million, I'd probably say you're right. But for 3647, I'm going to just trust you, so.
Remember, she's sitting with Kip Cooper, though.
Yeah, I mean, what is, theoretically, if the property were to not close, something go wrong, what, could we bring this back and we notice this thing for the 3647 if we're not paid in the next 30 days?
Well, the notice and order is on the property, so if it wasn't paid, it would roll over to the new owner.
Okay.
And it would be the same situation that we've had with the previous owners.
But there wouldn't be a lien if I.
Correct.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Mr. Still, I don't want to lien the property right now. I'm just going to give this lady the benefit of the doubt, but what can we do to preserve the city's right for the next, what'd you say, February, for the next 45 days to make to make sure that we're not hurt in any way?
Well, Councilman, if she represents that the check is here on Friday, it's a non-issue. But you may, what I would recommend is that you authorize staff to go ahead and record a lien if we haven't received the check by close of business Friday.
Well, let's give you another week or so.
Or whatever you deem is reasonable so that we still preserve our right and make that lien of record while the property is still at escrow.
Can I make, can I make a motion to accept the recommendation of Mr. Smith for the thirty six forty seven that we don't record this until maybe a week from Friday? Let me give her an extra week. You know, the check's in the mail, one of those. Okay. So my motion would be to accept the recommendation to lien the property for three thousand six hundred and forty seven dollars, but to not record the lien until a week from Friday, which is February, or January? Twenty ninth. Does that meet with your approval? Does it satisfy, does it satisfy what I'm trying to do?
I think it does accomplish that, Councilman. I think the bottom line is if we don't get the money by that date, we'll record the lien. If we have it, then it'll be moved.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public, anybody from the public, please speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to comment on the daily civil penalties. Councilman Reese, you know that we had a house in my area that we went fourteen years before we got that cleaned up. We went through three fires, boarded up, homeless. Absolute, it was a nightmare. And I wish you would explain to your council members what we went through. The only reason that we got that thing torn down is by putting the penalties on these people. We've got to, we've got to keep them. The second thing I'd like to comment, the banks, the banks are the ones that took this economy over the cliff. All of us, they're using the taxpayer bailout money now to enrich themselves with their billion-dollar bonuses? And we're giving them breaks? Meanwhile, the city is trying to, it has to lay off people? This is insane, folks. This is insane. It's the only way we're going to get money out of these banks. This is the only way. You've got to hold a gun to their head and get it this way. I wish you would tell your councilmen what we went through on that, on that house on the street.
I have, buddy.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
You know, Mr. Farlow, I, I am sensitive to your emotion. But what we did two weeks ago was we made that extra phone call to get the attention of the bank and the bank showed up. And we're going to get the money we want. We've got a house that's being maintained throughout, so it's not a nuisance to the neighbors. We're going to get new buyers in that are going to reside in the house and take pride in the house. So if it wasn't for all that, that fifty thousand dollar penalty would be part of my motion. But they showed up in good faith and everything's peachy keen now.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Cast your vote, please. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not to slow you down, but I've got to say something again, Devin. And this has nothing to do with the local folks. You guys are doing a great job and doing everything you need to. But again, it gets back to these banks. And I'm having a hard time swallowing this. I'll tell you why. Because if these banks aren't sharing information with the, with any of these companies as they're doing these transactions, they're basically telling us to go pound sand, City of Las Vegas. I don't care how many civil penalties you put on me, we're not going to pay them. And that's not the message. And I know that has nothing to do with this item, Councilman Wilson. I think you've got this one well under control. But I think that's what's coming down the pipeline. And I don't want that to be a reflection on this, Council. We have taken this very seriously with these banks trying to keep these neighborhoods and these homes taken care of.
And I will say, Councilman, Ms. Hibbler can contest to how many hours of time she's spent trying to track this bank down to just try to get to this point. And unfortunately, that's what we go through many, many times.
And I understand. And that's why I have this frustration. And I know, I'm not directing at this, this item particularly. It's the whole principle. And it frustrates me because we're trying to do what's right for the benefit of the people, this city. And corporate America is telling us, who cares? And that's what I'm having a hard time with.
I ain't letting you talk no more. Okay, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item sixty-two is a public hearing to consider reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at two thirteen Rosemary Lane in the amount of two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars fifteen cents and assess a maximum of thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner Pamela Crater, this is in Ward one. Councilman Tarkanian. Mr. Smith.
Again, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is that the condition of this property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared this property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired American Demolition to remove all trash and high, dry and dead vegetation. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of November two thousand and six was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a one thousand one dollar invoice for American Demolition Services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents and consider assessing a maximum of thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
Thank you, Devin. Yes, sir.
Robert Danner with Remax Benchmark Realty, thirty-nine hundred South Wallaby, Las Vegas, representing the property, representing the seller, Pamela Crater. We do have the property in escrow. It is a short sale. The market conditions, the value of the property has gone down considerably. The prospective buyer is now residing at the property for the last couple of months and is now taking care of the property. We're very close to having the short sale accepted. The bank's been talking to us and we think we have a number that they'll accept. We believe we can get, no, we can get these fees paid, however, request that the civil penalties be waived so we can close the transaction. The civil penalties are imposed. I don't believe that, we're going to have an issue closing the transaction.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? So no one will close the public hearing. Councilman Tarkanian.
How much are you selling the house for?
Two hundred and ninety thousand.
I just wanted to point out that the pictures that were shown on the video were in the front yard. It was the backyard that was really horrible and it's the backyard that has to be kept up. The weeds were so high and so dry that it was really a fire hazard for the neighbor, particularly on the right side of the yard. I'm willing to make a motion that the city be paid the two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents for the hard costs we've expended and that we can negate the daily civil penalties unless you have problems in collection or in correspondence.
No, this is the first conversation that I've had with this representative. All of ours has gone to the current owner, Pamela Crater, and we have no return, nothing returned back from her.
And the reason why I stated that is sometimes, you know, we're let along on a string and it costs us even more amount of time and everything. And would that be your recommendation?
Again, we would like to recommend that we go ahead and get that authorized and I'll get a lien placed on that property that could be there, get cleared up in escrow at the time of closing.
Okay. I would, I would move accordingly that we follow staff's direction.
That's for an amount of two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars fifteen cents? Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries.
It really is. Beautiful area. Thank you.
Item sixty-three is a public hearing to consider reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at two twenty-four West Baltimore Avenue in the amount of five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars eighty-five cents and assess a maximum of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner Johnson Development LLC, this is Ward three. Mr. Smith.
Again, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired American Demolition to remove all trash, dead trees and limbs and high vegetation. To date, there have been nine inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of May two thousand and six was seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollar invoice for American Demolition Services in addition to other fees for a total of five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents and consider assessing a maximum of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Is anyone here from Johnson Development LLC? Seeing no one. I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for assessing the amount of five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars eighty-five cents and assess a maximum of fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item sixty-four is a public hearing to consider reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at fourteen fifty-seven North Gateway Road in the amount of four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars fifty cents and assess a maximum of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner Fior, Fiorellas Toledo, this is Ward three. Mr. Smith.
Again, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Weaver Construction to remove all trash from vacant lot, cut any high and dead vegetation on vacant lot and in front of metal gate and paint over graffiti on the rear block wall. To date, there have been nine inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of January two thousand and five was a hundred thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a nine hundred and fifty dollar invoice for Weaver Construction Services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents and consider assessing a maximum of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Council members, if people are actually out there trying, that's one thing. But if they don't try, they don't show up at the council meeting to explain themselves or nothing. It should give us a clue that they don't care.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for approval of four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars fifty cents and assess a maximum of fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item sixty-five is a public hearing to consider reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at thirty-three twenty-five Buffalo Narrow Circle in the amount of three thousand three, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and assess a maximum of thirty-one thousand fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner Federal National Mortgage ASA, ASSN, this is in Ward four, Councilman Anthony, this is Ward. Mr. Smith.
Again, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Disaster Cleanup of Nevada to remove all trash and high dead vegetation. To date, there have been eight inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of December two thousand and seven was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a two hundred and sixty dollar invoice for disaster cleanup of Nevada services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and consider assessing a maximum of thirty-one thousand fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone here from Federal National Mortgage? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Could we see that, that picture again of the house? Because I saw a sign on the window. When the house next to me, when Fannie, when that went back to Fannie Mae, Fannie Mae came and posted a sign on the, on the window that says, any, anything that had to do with the property cleanup, contact them at that number. And I just wondered if, if that was the, the sign that was on that window and if we did contact that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. With your permission, Devin, this house, since you've done the work, is not considered a public nuisance any longer. I mean, it's in, it's locked up, it's in good shape. I mean, it's obviously could be better in the neighborhood, but it's not a public nuisance any longer, right?
That's correct.
Now, do you go back there on a regular basis to check on it?
We do. Staff in there, we go back, it's generally somewhere near thirty days. But if they're in the neighborhood doing other cases and they happen to be on that block, it could be two weeks, it could be forty days, it could be twenty days. But if they're in the area and they're doing other properties in that general vicinity, they'll drive by to see the conditions of the property and verify that it is in the same condition that it should be. And if not, then they'll start notification again, add notes to the file that it's not being kept up.
And do we assess some kind of a charge for doing that or that's just, just?
If we went by there and the property was in the condition that it had been previously and no one was taking care of, what my staff does is they send me an email requesting an immediate fee, which means we don't have to start the fee, the notice process all over again because this is an open case. Then we authorize an immediate fee and we would charge immediate one hundred and eighty dollar reinspection fee.
Okay. And then you come back later on for us to assess that?
We would have added it into our report saying since that time that this, that the property has become a public nuisance, we have a new case on that and we will refer to that in this meeting, yes.
Okay, I read the backup material on this and apparently the, the civil penalties of thirty-one thousand was, was not, was assessed while the previous property owner had the property, not Federal National Mortgage Association.
That is correct.
So.
It was approximately three months passed before the bank actually retained title.
Okay. Do you have any idea what they're doing with this property or?
I do not. We got a certified card back from them, January eighth, that they received the letter of this public hearing. We've had, we've heard nothing or had no contact with them.
All right. Since Federal National Mortgage Association wasn't the owner when we assessed the penalties, I'm going to go ahead and my motion is to waive the thirty-one thousand fifty dollars and assessing three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars for the general fund.
You've heard the motion. Any, any questions with the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item sixty-six is a public hearing to consider reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance related at thirty-two seventy North Buffalo driving the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars twenty-five cents and assess a maximum of thirty-four thousand fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owners Kim Ann and Heine V Tran, this is Ward four also. Mr. Smith.
Again, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Gray Eagle Construction to remove all high vegetation and trash from landscaped areas, remove all banners from buildings and monument sign, remove graffiti from all sides of building, remove signage from face of building, windows, monument sign. To date, there have been nine inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of October two thousand and five was one million six hundred thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollar invoice for Gray Eagle Construction Services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of six thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents and consider assessing a maximum of thirty-four thousand fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
This is a public hearing. Anyone speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. See, no one will close the public hearing. Is Kim or Heine V. Tran here? Okay. Councilman Anthony, Anthony, please.
Again, Devon, this isn't a, it's not a nuisance anymore, correct?
That is correct.
Have you ever talked to these folks before?
The only thing in the conversation we've had is through certified letters, and, and they do actually have signed off on the last card they received was one five of ten, but we had sent probably six to eight letters, certified letters to them in the past at different addresses, and we finally tracked them down at that address. We usually go by like the, the assessor's record of the last known address, and then we'll go to silver bills or whatever we can do to go through utility companies, try to track them down. So all those letters were numbers or addresses that we believed to be good, and finally we got a, a response at the ninety forty South Money Cristo Way.
So you've definitely tried to work with these folks to make sure this property isn't a problem, and they're not responding to you? And they're not calling you, they're, they're not showing up today?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'm going to, my motion is to assess the maximum thirty-four thousand fifty dollars in civil penalties and six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight one, ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the general fund.
Thank you, Councilman. You've heard the motion. Any question? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item sixty-seven is hearing review for the, for the vacant or abandoned buildings located at nine oh one West McWilliams Avenue, units one oh one through one oh four, one oh six, two oh one, two oh two, two oh five through two oh six, three oh one through three oh six, four oh one through four oh six, five oh one through five oh five, six oh one through six oh six, seven oh one, seven oh two, seven oh four through seven oh six, eight oh one through eight oh three, eight oh six, eight oh eight through eight ten, nine oh two to nine oh four, nine oh six and nine oh seven, one thousand one West McWilliams Avenue, eight forty West Bonanza Road and nine twenty West Bonanza Road. Property owner, Las Vegas Apartments, Apartment Lenders LLC. This is in Ward five. Councilman Bartle's Ward. And Mr. Smith, please.
And again, Mayor Protem, Devon Smith, manager of neighborhood response. The purpose and background is the subject property was determined to be substandard, dangerous, and declared a public nuisance as defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code Title nine point oh four point oh two oh, Titles sixteen point oh eight and sixteen point three one. Notice and orders regarding vacant and dangerous and abandoned buildings and demolition were mailed to the property owners to correct the violation. Today's hearing is a review regarding the status of the violations from the public hearing items on August fifth, two thousand and nine, review hearing on September second, two thousand and nine, and review hearing on October seventh, two thousand and nine. The review of status of violations listed in the, the recommendation is to review the status of violations listed in the revised and rerecorded notice and order regarding vacant and abandoned dangerous buildings and the revised and rerecorded notice and order to abate dangerous, dangerous building demolition mailed on June eighteenth of two thousand and nine. Neighborhood Services recommends a ninety day review.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Smith?
Jory Scholl, thirty-eight eighty-three Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of Las Vegas Apartment Lenders. I don't necessarily have any questions of Mr. Smith. I just wanted to come and give essentially the council and Councilman Bartle an update on the status of some matters that we discussed last time when we came before council. There are three-
Excuse me a moment, please. I have a question, Mr. Smith. How much are we, do we want to lean this property for?
Today is just a review to go back over the status. We've just been kind of following the progression of this because the, the property went into default, the lending people took it back over, and we've been working with them. They went in, boarded, secured, and have maintained property and security on site since that date. So basically, the councilman is required at the last meeting just to bring it forward for a review, and we're not going to be asking for any additional liens or anything recorded on the property at this time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public hearing. Councilman Bartle?
Yes. If you can just provide an update as to where we are in the process, what, what has been done on the property since October two thousand and nine? Because each and every day, I, I have a growing concern in regards to the blight of the property, the parcel itself. It looks like an atomic bomb hit it, and, and I don't want that to continue to sit in that dilapidated state in the middle of my ward. So where are we in the process? Where are you and your clients in the process? Devon, from code enforcement standpoint, I want to know if there's any outstanding conditions that have not been met as of to date. Give me an update.
Did you want Devon to go first, or you want?
You can go first, that's fine.
Okay. Well, the councilman will recall that we entered into an agreement with the City of Las Vegas to address the outstanding code violations, and we agreed to the recording of two liens, one on the Las Vegas Apartment Lenders property, and then also the recording of a lien on the Olympic Coast Investments property where the Moulin Rouge Hotel Casino is located. Those liens are to be paid at the time of closing at the sale of the properties. So the only thing when we came before the council last time that was outstanding under the agreement was there's a, there's a, a structure on the Moulin Rouge property that is commonly referred to as the Bell Tower, and the city had some concern that that tower was not safe, that it wasn't secure, and that it could fall over. So in connection with our agreement with the city, we agreed that we would hire an engineer that would be acceptable to the city and to the owner of the property. That was done. The report was prepared and given to the city. However, the civil engineer for the city had some concerns that the report itself lacked some detail that they wanted to see in it. The engineer that was hired by our client went and met with the city. That report has been updated satisfactorily to the city to address the concerns with regards to that bell tower. So-
So what was the outcome of the bell tower? What, did it need to be taken down? Was it secured?
No, the determination is that it's not in danger of collapse pursuant to the letter of the engineer, and the civil engineer from the city wanted to see more detail included in the letter, and that was done.
Okay. Continue.
So the other thing which Mr. Smith has already pointed out is that the, there is ongoing security on, on, on the premises, twenty-four hour security. The site has been, there were several dumpsters loads of garbage and so forth that was removed from the property, so there's not any danger, outstanding health and safety issues with regards to the property. In November, we have, we went under contract to sell the property to a prospective buyer, and in connection with that contract, there were, it came up that there were several liens recorded against the property, mechanics liens and other liens on title that were put there when our borrower held title to the property. We had to go to court and file some actions to get rid of some of those liens. To make a long story short, just towards the first week of January, we were able to think, we think, get the last of those liens resolved, which has helped create a situation where the lender is now willing to proceed with closing. At least, that's what we've been told. If, right now, our intention is and our hope is that we'll be able to close within the next couple of weeks, if that doesn't work out, then we have engaged a broker who has prepared a website that will be launched with regards to the property to help market and sell the property. And also, we intend to sit down and meet with the city and city staff and discuss possible options about what, what can be done with regards to the property going forward.
Okay. Devon?
Not much has really changed on the property. The property remains boarded, secure, cleaned. It, it remains a blight in the neighborhood, and we'd like to see this move forward rapidly so a new buyer could take it over and we could, you know, move forward with some type of progression with it. But at this time, they have no violations on the property that we could address.
Okay. And so the recommendation before me is for a ninety day review. And that ninety day of review does what for me today?
Basically, we would bring it forward, and if nothing's changed, the, the council could make a recommendation, or we can make a recommendation on how we would like to see this property proceed with the current owner possibly demoing it, or it would, it would basically be a, a recommendation or a, something that you could bring forward at that time, the suggestion that we could move forward with.
So today, and I'll lean on council at this point with my next comment is, is it possible for me to place a condition that the, after ninety days, the site would have to be demoed?
I would leave that to-
Do I have any council down there?
I thought you were talking to the gentleman at the podium, Councilman. I'd have to look at that. What I need to do is look at the underlying agreement that Mr. Scholl has referred to to see what conditions were agreed to back. I wasn't here and I wasn't involved in that, so I'm going to have to take a look at that agreement before I could really fully advise you on that.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll share this with you. My, I'm going to move forward with the recommendation from staff as far as the ninety day review. And if in fact nothing has moved forward, my motion at that time will basically be to move for demolition of the site.
I, I hear what you're saying, and we will be in communication with the city about that before the next hearing.
Because it's my goal to not allow twenty-ten, two thousand and ten to, to pass us like the last two years with this site in the state of condition that it is today.
Well, the, the only thing that I would ask the councilman to consider is the fact that it's a challenge right now to get lenders to loan on property. It's the toughest economy we've seen since the Great Depression, so-
Right, right. You, you're preaching to the choir. I'm very familiar with that. My concern is the structures that do you no good as the property owner, and it does the community in which I represent no good for it to be standing. So whether the structures are up or whether the structures are down, you have an opportunity to continue to sell your parcel. I'm concerned about the structures, not the parcel. So with that being said, I'll move for a ninety day review of condition, and hopefully you're able to move forward with this project prior to that time. That's my motion at this time, Mayor Protem.
That'll be, that'll be April twenty-first. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, if I may, what was that date again?
April twenty-first. And then we're going to tear it down. Item eighty-six is a special use permit, thirty-six fifty-five fifty-eight, special public hearing applicant, Hame Gabby, owner, HS Family LP, request for a special use permit for beer, wine, cooler, off sale establishment within an existing five thousand one hundred and sixty-six square foot retail establishment at three sixteen Fremont Street. Planning commission and staff recommends approval. This is in Ward five. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Niff Salvez, and I'm representing Hangar Bay. If you have any questions, I'm more glad to answer.
You have any questions, the applicant?
I'm sorry?
I just asked if they had any questions of you.
No.
They, they had no questions of you either. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public hearing. This is in Ward five. Councilman Bartle?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Earlier in the morning session, we obeyed an item that was related to, to this item, I thought. Forty-four?
If I may?
Yes.
The issue, I, through you, Mayor Protem, as you know, this item, as is the case with other SUPs, we have a condition that indicates that this does not, the approval of this SUP does not constitute the approval of the biz, the liquor license. That is a separate business license application, which has to do with requirements of business licensing Title VI. With regard to this matter, the SUP, which is Title nineteen requirement, staff can make a recommendation for approval. This applicant, like all others, would then have to go through the business licensing division in order to actually get their business license to operate. There are no land use issues at this time.
Okay. And are you East Frem-, is this East Fremont?
There's just Fremont, yes.
East Fremont?
Yes, three sixteen East Fremont.
Okay, okay. Okay. So are there any concerns from?
There are no land use concerns, sir.
No land use concerns? Okay. Then with that, I will move to, I'll move for approval of item number eighty-six, subject to all conditions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public hearing. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item eighty-eight is a special use permit, thirty-six fifty-five seventy-one, public hearing applicant, Summerland Enterprise, Inc., owner, patent Rampart LLC, request for a special use permit to add a thrift store, thrift shop jewelry used within an existing nine hundred square foot jewelry store at twenty-two thirty-five North Rampart, Rampart Boulevard. This is in Ward four. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Yes, sir.
Lawrence Minden, owner, Summerland Enterprises, just here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing no one, this is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public hearing. Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Minden, Councilman Ross alluded to this a little bit earlier, but it says on, in the agenda item that this is a special use permit to add a thrift shop. Just, just talk about your jewelry store, because, I mean, I've, I've seen it. It's a nice jewelry store. It's not a thrift shop. And just talk a little bit about how you're going to be handling used jewelry and, and what kind of, what, what portion of your business is going to be used jewelry, what's new jewelry, and how you're going to handle that.
Okay. I'd like to start with saying that the word thrift shop has been very misleading since we're talking about a showcase within an existing jewelry store that carries estate jewelry. But in the city of Summerland, they didn't have any designation for that other than thrift shop. So thrift shop then with the brackets jewelry has been what's on this permit. A brief statement, if I could, about my business that I prepared. So we're talking about a, a very small percentage of our business, but that does require a special use permit. Summerland Jewelers is currently enjoying our sixteenth year in the same location. We are a family owned and operated business which began in Las Vegas in nineteen sixty-two with my father Bernard Minden. My grandfather operated jewelry stores in Canada. We are proud members of the Better Business Bureau and Chamber of Commerce. We are a full service jewelry store with approximately seven thousand items of gold jewelry at fair prices. We repair and sell estate jewelry and antique watches. We have two watchmakers, a gemstone cutter polisher, three custom jewelers who work off premise, one bench jeweler who works in the store. We service all of Sun City Summerland residents. A secondhand dealer's license would allow us to purchase used gold and watches from our loyal customers. This is a much needed alternative to our customers, many of whom are senior citizens not desiring to visit pawn shops or hotel room buyers for their jewelry needs. Thousands of residents in Sun City Summerland have built a relationship with us over the years and appreciate our honesty and loyalty. We respectfully request approval of the special use permit before you today, as well as approval of the privilege license application currently of the City of Las Vegas License Department.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions, the applicant?
Just Mayor Protem, with your permission, Councilman Anthony. I, I was out in the back for a moment, and I apologize for that, and I may have missed this, but how long have you been in that location?
We're in our sixteenth year.
Yeah, that's what I thought, a long time. That's where the Thirty-One Flavors was right next to you?
Exactly.
Are they coming back at all? I mean, I really like their ice cream.
They're not. It was a corporate store, and the rising rates was more than they could bear.
Okay. But I know you've been in that location a long time. You're in Councilman Anthony's ward, but you're literally right across the street from Ward two, where I represent and where I live, so I'm in support of this gentleman, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, sir. This is a, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public hearing. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My motion is to follow the planning commission and staff's recommended for approval.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number ninety-two, as I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission, meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance later abatements. Item ninety-three, as a citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker's loud may be limited. Will you please set the, the clock to three minutes? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this portion of the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Deanne Weisner, you know me as the Public Information Officer for your right. What is before the camera, and the public does not know this, but this is NRS one ninety-nine, Crimes of Justice, Obstructing Justice. You all are charged with this, upholding this law. The crime that is being committed by this council is the obstruction of justice. You all gave your authority to the Regional Justice Center to use the system called Odyssey Case Management System, and that system is full of, riddled with errors. We got an internal email from Clark County over the weekend that the problem with the Odyssey system, their general counsel, which is, his name is Lynn Moore, Tyler Technologies' general counsel, Lynn Moore, has stated that it is a Clark County problem because Clark County's Laura Fucci, F-U-C-C-I, intentionally went to a, a case management system, only taking evidence going forward when the contract started, and that was in May two thousand and five. So now you're in violation of NRS one ninety-nine because the system is obstructing justice. Also, we went early to Councilman Wolfson and made him aware, and he chose to do nothing. He's in criminal contempt, and this is, that would have any other attorney, he's held criminal contempt, and this is... That would have any other attorney, he's held to a higher standard. He's required to recuse himself. Also, his wife is in criminal contempt.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem?
And that was by a decision of Abdullah L. Kidd versus...
Excuse me, please. Councilman?
What are you talking about?
Well, obviously, you're not conducting due diligence. I came to you with the Odyssey Court documents and showed you that they were corrupted. We have since learned why. You chose to do nothing about it. I came to you very early on in your career as a councilman. I sat down at your law office, and your two assistants, I believe, Audra and Crystal were their names, so they're witnesses, and they saw the documents, and I said, "It's corrupted," and you did nothing about it. That's called criminal. Is there going to be a problem here?
Not yet.
Okay. That's called criminal... That's called... Okay. That's called criminal contempt. It's obstruction of justice, and Tyler Technologies knows that Odyssey Case Management only took evidence of case hearings going forward from May 2005. By May 2... By August 2006, the United States Department of Health and Human Services and Elizabeth Fretwell got the letter early on that the problem... May I continue? That the problem that was going on in Clark County to the children, the reason the suspicious deaths were so high, is because of the Odyssey Case Management System. The children's history of abuse was not being put into these case hearings. So, these children were being court ordered right back into their abuser's care.
Time's up, please. Next, please.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident, P.O. Box 4668, Las Vegas 89125. I just would like to know about if something's being done on my case concerning these programs that sit on Ellis Air Force Base and plan for people like myself. Now, who... Who's given permission to put my name on the program without my permission? They shouldn't have my name on such a program that it's on. I didn't give anyone permission. I'd like to know what steps can be taken to get my name off. How long will it take? And, you know, who can do it? How can it be done? I mean, I need my name off this program. I did explain in previous meeting, I was just not supposed to be left behind when such programs were implemented on military intelligence software, and they're still claiming me on the program. I'm running into a problem with people I don't even know, because people are being allowed on Ellis to assign themselves like five-star generals. I mean, too many chiefs and not enough Indians. Someone has to lead, and someone has to follow. Someone has to know how to follow orders, and someone has to know how to give the orders. I need to know what's being done, how long it'll take to get my name off the program.
Thank you.
You don't know who I can see and how it can be handled?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Race. I am currently homeless. You may remember me, Mayor Protem, from CitizenSecurity2000.com, the one who produced the DVD, and you can currently see it at raceversusthueson.8k.com. That's R-A-C-E-V-S-T-H-U-E-S-O-N dot AK dot com, and you may know why I'm homeless. If you don't, a couple of judges have insisted that I be homeless in retaliation for the lawsuit I filed against the city. The first judge was Kathy Hardcastle, and she insisted that I be homeless. I recently filed in family court. I divorced my wife in 2007, the same time that I filed against the city and his honor, and I have an 11-year-old autistic son, and I revealed to the judge in pleadings, Frank Sullivan, that I planned to file to run for lieutenant governor, and I put exactly why I was going to run, and this judge was so outraged and so retaliatory that he forced me into homelessness, and you can see the litigation against the city at raceversusthueson.8k.com. So, now that I'm homeless, I guess I'll have nothing to do except come to city council meetings. So, I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else ready to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Ali Ariza-Raptari. I'm living in 4009 Starfire Lane. I'm coming here. The reason is the property taxes, and my property value is really, really down, is reduced, but my property taxes, excuse me, risen up, and I don't know what I have to do.
Stop this lady right here and see if she can't help you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Maybe Mark Schofield.
Yeah, he would have to take that up with Clark County, but Betsy, I'm pretty sure you're giving the details.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just want to mention, from what that gentleman just said, that the newspaper and articles in some magazines have said, "Be careful to watch if you have gone down and your taxes haven't. It's a natural thing to go to the tax assessor because there may be an error," and they are urging people, even the assessor office is urging them to see if there is.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close item 94. We'll go to item 95. Is there any member of the council wish to speak on this portion of the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a couple of announcements. On February 4th, I will be conducting my monthly coffee with the councilmen. This, the first Thursday of February, February 4th, I will be at the location at the corner of Lake Mead and Rainbow at Starbucks. So, for those residents looking to come out and speak to me in regards to any issue or item that they would like to bring forward, February 4th, Lake Mead and Rainbow at Starbucks from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. Secondly, 6:30 p.m., Your City, Your Way. The mayor, our city manager, myself, and other council members will be at the Doolittle Community Center. Starting at 6:30, we will be hosting a neighborhood meeting to discuss the city's budget and ways in which we can structure our budget to not only save jobs but improve the city and how we do business. So, I encourage all of the Ward 5 residents and community... City of Las Vegas community members as a whole to come out to Doolittle on the 4th of February, 6:30 p.m. And in addition to that, Neighborhood Services will be hosting a meeting here in the council chambers at 6 o'clock on the 4th as well to discuss the changes to the group homes. So, if you in fact own a group home in the City of Las Vegas boundaries, I would encourage you to attend that meeting here at City Hall, 6 o'clock on February 4th. And on the 24th of February, Your City, Your Way will be hosting a... An additional town hall meeting at the Las Vegas Health District on Shadow Lane. So, thank you so very much for the time, Mayor Protem.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just wanted to ask a question. That February 4th meeting is at 6:00 at night?
The group home meeting is at 6:00 p.m., and the neighborhood meeting starts at 6:30 at Doolittle Community Center. The group home meeting will be here in this Las Vegas City Council chambers.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Just an observation. It never ceases to amaze me. I believe very strongly in the First Amendment and democracy, and Mayor Goodman speaks a lot about we have the best form of government that we allow people to come and say what's on their mind and say their piece. You know, one day I see a lady in the courthouse, and she comes up to me, and she makes a complaint about something, and she demands to see me, so I invite her down to my law office, and I sit down with her with a couple of staff members, and she talks to me about something for about 30 minutes and pretty much doesn't really identify what her problem is, and I direct her to a couple of departments where she might get some help, and here we are two years later, and the same lady comes up and accuses this council of committing crimes, accusing us individual of committing crimes, accusing our spouses of committing crimes. Last meeting, somebody else accused somebody else of committing crimes and doing this and doing this. It's just, you know, an amazing country we live in, I guess, that we allow people to get up and say those kinds of reckless statements, but we as public officials just sit up here and shake our heads and nod and kind of let them get away with it.
This attorney right down here, he's the one that says we have to... He's not there anymore. He's the one that says we have to do that.
No, and I don't know that I'd have it any differently, Mayor Protem. I think all of us would agree overall, it's a good thing to allow our citizens to come up and say what's on their mind, but there's just the minority of individuals that I think, in my opinion, just cross the line.
That's it. I agree with you, sir.
What a good thing to say.
Councilman Ross?
With your permission, your honor.
You bet.
And before the State of the City address last week, our family was blessed with its newest addition, a... My first granddaughter, my fourth grandchild, and I just want to say congratulations to my son and his wife. Thank you. They did all the work. The important thing is they named the little girl after my mother and my great-grandmother, which was really meaningful to us, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Please, now, if he's going to give attention to his new grandchild, I want to give attention to my new grandchild, who was a Christmas present, and that's Daniel John Tark... I mean, excuse me, Jerry Daniel Tarkanian. I was giving his father's name, but anyway, my son has three daughters, and this is the first son, and it's a wonderful, strong, healthy baby, and we're all very happy too. 11th grandchild.
That's good, that's good.
Congratulations. And I would, Mayor Protem, with your permission, like to thank my children for not giving me grandchildren yet. They're too young. It's too early, and if Rachel and Rebecca are listening, they know what I'm talking about. Their day will come. I'm too young to be a grandparent.
You're too young.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I do have one correction. With the dates that I've given out, the dates were correct on the group home. The time was inaccurate. The time was from 2:00 to 4:00 on the 4th of February. So, if in fact you own a group home, the meeting starts promptly at 2:00 until 4:00 p.m. right here in the council chambers on February 4th. Thank you, councilwoman, for that correction. Thank you.
I would just like to announce that at Freedom Park on Pacos and Washington, we're going to have a grand opening next Monday at 3:30. The New Big League Dreams, we have opened the rest of Freedom Park, but this here is going to be, to me, a huge production. I think it's going to be a great facility, and there's going to be a lot of people using the Big League Dreams. I'd just like to invite all the council members down at that time. If they have any way of getting there, I'd sure appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.